Yes, you do.
Do you have it or do I have it? Oh, it says right at the top, okay.
Yep, it's right on the meeting minutes, John, if you would just set it.
Got it, thank you.
Is Chris not coming? I didn't hear from her, she said she wasn't.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start the committee to review the purpose and composition, functionality, and effectiveness of the standing committees of the town. It is March 31st, it's just after 3:30. Before we go ahead, I'm gonna read the statement about this meeting being recorded. It is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, the chair must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make their presence known. Seeing none, this meeting will replay via Xfinity Channel 8 or High Definition Channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the Government Access Channel Live Video on Demand Archives on the Town of Barnstable's website. Okay, roll call.
Committee members, Councillor Turkelson.
Here.
Councillor Bernik. Councillor Lucky.
Here.
Vice President Chris Clark. Sheriff Committee, John Crowe.
Here.
You have quorum. And point of information, Vice President Clark is on her way, she's running five minutes late, I just got a message from her.
Okay, I sent out something, handed out to you all about, just a recap of last meeting, we had the minutes posted. First, we talked about the recommendation to eliminate the following existing town committees. There was a town library committee, the water quality committee, the roads committee, Jane Eschbach Community Service Award Committee, and the cable TV advisory board. The committee voted in favor of limiting all of the above committees. We had a short talk about the airport commission, and Attorney Cogliano was going to investigate some language information of where authorities lie with federal and state governments. Did you have a chance to maybe look into that for him?
So I focused, and I know, I apologize, I know I said I would get these lists out to you ahead of time, but it turned out to be a more complicated project than I expected. What I did is I went literally committee board commission by committee board commission through the code, and then through the state statutes to see which state statutes actually granted the authority to whichever party. So I did bring two lists with me, I brought a list of the regulatory boards, commissions, committees. That's, those are usually in the ordinance, I read in the ordinance, so that's, I'm 100% sure on. And then I brought you a list of 25 of the boards, commissions, committees that I know town council has the authority to appoint. There's a couple that are up in the air that, including the airport commission, that I am struggling with a little bit, because it seems, it seemed like maybe past practice isn't consistent with what the law says. However, I haven't really been able to have a conversation with the other attorneys in my department about that, so I at least brought this list for you all, that will be more than enough to start from, and I think it'll clear things up. In terms of the airport commission and switching that authority, I think that Councillor Lucky was 100% that if, correct, that if we were to try to switch that, it would have to go on the ballot. But I, based on what the, the, I couldn't find it in the charter, which it was told to me that it wasn't the charter, but Tom Larosa and I were looking through it on the phone one day, and we couldn't find where it's located in the charter.
Well, the charter is silent on it, that's what I was just pulling up here. Mr. Daley, who wrote the charter, who was on the charter commission, speaks about it specifically, that he made a deal not to put it in there. I mean, I have it here, the article there. But Bob Smith, before your time, Chris, you probably remember the name, Bob Smith went up for the town and argued it, and that's why, that's when they came up for the language, that the home rule overrides the mass general law, because it is mass general law that they have how you can do airport commissions, but we can override that. So you're not gonna find it in the charter, because Mike Daley left it out of the charter. He says right here, the airport's free-flying days should be over, but he didn't put it in the charter, he wished he had. So that's why it does have to go out to the voters.
Well, either, if it was in the charter, it would have to either, as well, because if we need to change the charter, it has to go out to the voters.
Yeah, so it does have to go to the voters. But the, why Bob Smith had to go up to Mass Aeronics was Mass Aeronics says, "You can't even do that." And they, when Bob Smith showed them the law, they said, "Actually, you can."
Okay.
So that's why in 2005, we should be able to look at the ballot from 2005 and find the language, if we want to take this back to the voters. And, you know, I have some, I could put this together for people for the different arguments, but this was the, and again, you guys, Chris, you probably know Daley and.
I know Mike Daley.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so there was, there's a lot of background on it. And I, you know.
Good for you.
I think, I think it would be wise to have something as substantial as that, more in concert with the town and moving together instead of separately.
Do you mind sharing that with Attorney Cogliano?
Oh, I could send all this.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I absolutely would read it. I think that's a bigger, I mean, I don't know, it probably could be considered within the purview of this committee, but I think it's a bigger move that.
Well, it's something we'd have to talk to Ann Cork about through Tommy, when does she need this to get it on the ballot in the fall? We certainly wouldn't want to have to do a separate.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe, maybe as part of your recommendations to the full council, you know, as an ad hoc committee, that could be part of your recommendation, is that that's something you all feel strongly about, so you could obviously discuss further and look into it and then make a motion, but eventually.
Yeah, that's the town council president at the time, with a cartoon that said, "If you do this, you'll destroy."
I'm good to give this. Yeah, all right, I'll give you the, these, just so you have them in front of you, because to the first.
Yeah, I could send you all this stuff, but I think you just have to go to the court's office to find the actual ballot question.
It is not coming, or?
Uh, we don't know.
Oh, okay.
Hold on, I'll give this to Cindy now, but.
Cindy, he's not coming? The last committee meeting, he stated, from when I watched and read, that his schedule is all over, that he would try to make it if he could, but he wasn't sure.
So ignore the highlights, I mean, you don't have to ignore them, the ones that are highlighted on that first list are regulatory, but I put all regulatory on the second list, because some of the regulatorys, I believe, are under town manager appointment, but again, I have to continue my research. But that's at least what I'm looking at when I'm going, because the way it is, is the state statutes grant the authority to the town to create this committee commission board. Then we create, we put it in our town code. And as of right now, it says essentially, town council has the authority to appoint to all of these committee commissions board, unless the legal authority from the state states otherwise. So some of them will say, "The mayor," or "The select board shall have authority." Others are silent. Where they're silent, that's going to be town council. Where they specifically say, "Mayor, select board, executive officer," that's going to be town manager. And then there are some other caveats in the statutes where it might say, "Unless the charter provides otherwise." And in the charter, the town council has granted authority pretty much across the board for appointments. And then, so it's, there's, it's in a lot of spaces, that's why I was back and forth between like three windows. So this is what I've come up with so far, and like I said, I just want to, before I give you information that I, that may or may not be 100%, I want to have a conversation with Attorney Nober, because I think that there are a couple inconsistencies, and I just want to make sure that I'm not reading it incorrectly, I want a couple of second, third opinions. But at the very least, that first list I gave you is all town council appointed.
Okay, and like the Old Kings Highway, they're elected. Remember, the Old Kings Highway is from a state.
Yes, and some of them do, some of them, including like, I think, the planning board, there's a few elected members, and there's like one appointed member, I think, I might be mixing that up with another, but.
Planning board has elected members?
No, no, the Old Kings Highway, I think, has, it might be, it might be another one I'm thinking of.
The Old Kings Highway is elected.
That's great research, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's really complicated.
It's more complex than I thought, you know.
Yeah, mostly because of the, there's a statute that creates it, then it's our code that says who has authority, and then it's, then there's exceptions, so I did my best this first go around.
And actually, when I made the suggestion that, that on the boards, committee, commissions page, where all 43 are listed, that they be segmented into regulatory, advisory, and town council, I mean, town manager appointed, I realized that there's a fourth category, that they're duly elected on their own, like Old Kings Highway.
Yeah, Old Kings Highway.
It's not, they derive their authority in a fourth way.
It is fourth way, yeah.
And all of the ones that are regulatory are also advisory.
Really?
Yeah, and if you go, if you take a closer look at the code in each section where these are located, it'll say, "Planning, planning board is regulatory and advisory," or they'll say, you know, "Council on Aging is advisory," or it'll say, I think actually.
They were given all of the committees, they have the descriptions, and it's listed.
Yeah, so it's in the language, exactly, it's just in the middle there, so.
And just so you know, on the regulatory board, the Board of Registers, that's appointed by the town clerk.
Oh, thanks, but, yeah, and I don't know where.
That comes from the Republican and Democratic committees, that she, that is a town clerk appointed, because it comes from an elected party of a party.
Yeah, like, I know, I know you're required to have members of every party involved.
And then the town clerk is the one that appoints to it, and then she just lets us know, and the town council ratifies it according to her appointments.
Yeah, so, as I said, as of right now, the town manager, there's a few that are.
Yeah, the Old Kings Highway, the part I was thinking about was, it says, "The town council, upon nomination and approval of the committee, annually appoint one person residing in the district to serve as an alternate member."
Right. We only have an alternate, the rest of them are elected on a town line.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is, it hasn't come before us.
Oh.
Because they must do it on their own, is there someone?
There's a vacancy, actually, two vacancies.
Oh, is there? Well, so we haven't done it?
Apparently not.
I think they kind of just, they prob, I think what they do is recruit on their own for somebody from the district, they know, they know their region that enables someone to be a member. Except for, here's another exception, a builder or architect position that can be outside the district.
If they can't find somebody in the district.
But it doesn't say how long you have to look, or, you know, it's such a hard, hard position to recruit from, because I was gonna look for a list of all architects in the town of Barnstable, just to find out who might be willing. So fortunately, they've had a fellow who's served for a long time, and he's passed away, you know, so now they can't find anyone. So a builder was recruited, because it says an architect, and if, if an architect can't be found, then a builder is like the next best.
So did they find the builder?
Yes, but there's still alternate positions. But it can only be, like, for example, I can't vote, I live in precinct 11, but it's only, but I'm south of room 6, so I can't vote.
On the guns.
Yes, so it's a.
Okay, I forgot to do public comment, Larry, do you have something?
I'd like to do what I did the last time, just pick it up at the end.
Okay, we'll do it at the end, then. Continuing on, this is a recap of last meeting. As far as term limits, the committee voted in favor of a term limiting, of terming all regulatory committee members to two consecutive three-year terms, and if a member has surpassed this threshold, the member is allowed to finish the remainder of their current term. The committee also voted in favor of limiting the number of regulatory committees on which a member can serve to one committee at one time.
Can I, can I just ask the point of information?
Yeah.
I understand you guys took votes on this, but I think this would be better suited for the town council rules and the code that you're about to bark on, because you're gonna be changing the admin code if you put in term limits. Because right now, they're three-year terms, and they're staggering. If you want to introduce new language, it's an admin code, and that would be up to the town council rules committee to do that. You guys are supposed to be looking at committees on whether or not they're functioning in the town, not necessarily changing the makeup of the committee.
I see.
Well, this, I think we're, yeah, I agree, and we're also making recommendations to the council.
Right.
So this would be a recommendation that we voted in favor to put this on the list of recommendations.
Right, but what I'm saying is, don't do the work on it, because you've already got a subcommittee looking at the code next, and I bet he's on that, Chris is the chair, and that's where this should be looked at, because it's a code change.
Better fit, I understand.
Okay.
Not necessarily something that the town council can take action on, because it would be changing the way the makeup is in the, in the code.
So this is sort of a spot where they certainly intersect, because the committee is to review the composition, and so it could just be something, I think you've already voted to recommend to the council, I think that that's fine, and I think that when we, that when we meet for the ad hoc on the code, it's another conversation, another location that we can start with. It just happens that they overlap.
Yeah, and I think we brought it up in, in the way of the function of the committee.
Yeah, the functionality and effectiveness.
We thought that maybe when you have people in there for 20 years, you may be impacting the functionality of the committee, so that was.
And, and just also, so you know, they tried to do this probably eight years ago, they tried to put term limits on, or, it was a while back. And the reason why they didn't do it then, because I looked it up, was they were fewer volunteers if they know they're gonna be moved from a volunteer position. They, they weren't willing to, to volunteer. They called people in, and people said, you know, "If we set term limits, what do you, would you do it?" The biggest ones were the regulatory boards, because they said, "Once you start a project," some of them are two, three, four years long, "And if you're kicking me out at the end of four, or end of six, I would only, I don't, I don't get to complete the process that I first started with the committee, and then you're gonna bring somebody on board who now has to go through all the plans again, all of the arguments, all of the minutes, so that they can be caught up for the two-year project that was before them." That was what I had read, and what I remember from when I was doing the minutes, from when they first wanted to do this. Because they said the same reason, people are on boards too long. The idea of just carte blanquing everybody on the appointments committee as, "Oh, you're up for reappointment, yeah, let's, okay, that's cool." Now the appointments committee has rolled that back, and they interview everybody now. Just something to keep in mind, that that's why it was, it was not widely accepted the last time. And they didn't want to see mass exodus from the regulatory boards, because that would stop the process in the town, so.
If I may, thank you. I have had a constituent reach out to me, who happens to be serving on the Conservation Commission, and she thought, she listened to this recorded meeting, and she called me of her concern, I believe she's a retired biology teacher, and I have a great deal of faith in the work she's doing. She said she's taking a class to learn more about it, and she thinks that six years is way too short. She actually followed up the phone call, didn't get to her right away, so she followed it up with an email message and copied Councillor Bloom on it, who happens to be the liaison to conservation. And I called her back, then I called Councillor Bloom and explained that we had a direct conversation. And he said, "I was wondering where this concern came from." And I said, "Because we had a discussion," and she watched our committee meeting. And he said, "He agrees with her 100% that six years is too short." And I heard, did speak to another councillor, not breaking a quorum here, who also agrees that six years is too short. So I'm prepared to change my vote in light of that information. Her point was not only what Cindy told us about the getting, watching a project that may span several years, but she said, "Just to learn the regulations." And she goes to the conferences for conservation commissions, and she said, "For her, as a teacher, to become up to speed with the regulations." She takes it seriously, but it takes a while for her to come to the knowledge base to be able to chime in on some of the issues or proposals before them effectively. So especially for regulatory boards, I'm, I'm prepared to change my mind. I didn't mean to back off, but I, I was supportive of the majority, and now I've changed my mind, just that I should.
I wasn't part of the conversation, obviously, because I wasn't here, but I, I would not support this. I think that being a new councillor, as I am, and how much I'm being asked to understand and learn and get up to speed, I think a regulatory board has its, has its authority outside of us as the town council, and their job is enormous. I mean, go to a ZBA meeting, listen to a conservation meeting, I've spoken to a couple, I've spoken to one person who worked in the town, who dealt with a conservation commission, and then also another chair of, not even a regulatory board, but, and just, you know, I think, I think if it's something we want to do, I think we really need to ask the chairs of committees, and people that have been in committees, I think we really need to have an understanding of the amount of work that these people put in to do their jobs for us for no pay is enormous. And I think, especially in the regulatory committees, there's a lot to learn, and it takes a long time. And I think if we have a 12-year limit, I think we should make, I think if we're gonna do it, I think we should be, why, why six for them and 12 for us? I think it would be, we'd be more willing to do something that says, it's more of an equal footing, we're here, we have the ability to be here for 12, so that I could maybe get behind, but I think we might want to do a deeper dive into listening, listen to the regulatory chairs that have, you know, been there a long time, maybe there's a reason they're there a long time. I'm more concerned with one person in many places making many decisions and having too much central control over many places. That concerns me more than somebody who's put a lot of time and effort in and has learned all of the codes and all of the things they need to do in order to be a regulatory board. I actually, I think the institutional knowledge sometimes gets lost, and I do agree with Mr. Moore in that, you know, we do a pretty miserable job of training. We don't train our town councillors well, we maybe don't train our, our board and committee and commission members well either, so I think that would be an important thing to think about, is how could we have a more robust training, so that, God forbid, somebody does have to step out for whatever reason there is, that we have somebody who can backfill a regulatory board that has a lot of work to do, so I think it needs more work. That's mine.
I don't disagree with any of those arguments. I think this is a recommendation, I think it will come forward, and the council certainly will have, if they decide on term limits at all, they will decide on longer term. And I, actually, what you've both said makes some sense to me also. My concern was, you get the same people for long distinct times, and then if they're not working out, or if they're not, we just need new blood every once in a while. And so, we have voted as a committee, I think we should leave that the way it is, but I think as it comes back around to the next iteration, after we present ours to the council, that's something we discuss, and I'd be willing to, to discuss that also.
And I also, yeah, and I also would hope, maybe, as the appointments committee seems to have morphed a little bit and changed, that maybe we're a little more selective in reappointing people who maybe aren't doing a good job, you know, or, and also getting the word out, so that we have new people coming into our boards, committees, and commissions. So I think it's a really layering process that we're dealing with, and, and I know where it's coming from, and it's not that I don't, don't think it's valuable, I just think the way in which we navigate that needs to be vetted, so, yeah. I mean, I think it would probably bring up town council comment, for sure.
Yeah, I think so too, so I think.
Even at 12 years, it'd probably do the same thing, so.
Yeah, okay. What's the other thing I had?
And I appreciate you being open-minded, so thank you.
Of course, I mean, this is just something we did, that we voted on, so, like I said, it'll be, I think there'll be a lot of people, smart people, not smart people, but people who are, who have a lot of knowledge, institutional knowledge, who have something to say about this, that's why I'm willing to hear that myself.
If you don't mind, this is just an aside, but I had sat in on a meeting of the planning board, and what looked to me like an attorney, I couldn't remember if he was an attorney or an engineer, who was proposing an amendment to a judgment that the planning board already gave his client. He was asking for an expanded version of it. The planning board deliberated, and they voted no. And the guy sat down, but then he came back up and spoke, and he said, even though he did not prevail with his request, he said, "Just to let you know, this is one of the most professional boards I've dealt with." He, he made a point of complimenting them after he was not granted what he asked for. So to me, that, that told me that we have a high-functioning planning board, as it sits now, for what it's worth. It was an unsolicited compliment made to the board, the guy wouldn't have known there was a councillor in the office.
I've heard the same, too, and, not the same guy, other people. And this is not just about the plan, it was all regulatory boards. So I think we can talk about that again at a different venue. We did, is the committee still in favor of one committee at one time, one regulatory committee at one time? We also talked about the town website, organizing it into separate regulatory committees versus town-appointed or town manager-appointed, and that kind of stuff.
Can I just ask?
Go ahead.
Sorry. The one you voted in favor of limiting the number of regulatory committees, there's a number of them that have representation from, are you eliminating that?
We can't.
No, we can't, if, if.
No.
The CPCs, for example.
Yeah, because there's a number of boards that have people from, like Recreation has somebody from CPC, somebody from Open Space.
Right, Sandy Neck Board has somebody from Recreation and Conservation.
Yeah, we're just talking about, about.
Separate boards that people apply for, that are not feeder, not feeder, not feeder committees.
Not feeder boards, but separate regulatory boards.
So one can't be on the Board of Health and also the, the planning board at the same time.
Yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying, all right. I just didn't want, because there's a lot of representation across.
Thank you.
Because that's mostly written in code anyway, or the state language, and we don't have any control over that.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Sorry about this. This recommendation to eliminate the water quality committee, I since have had a interaction with someone who sits on the CWMP committee, which meets today at 6:00. And this person thinks that the CWMP committee is an ad hoc committee to support the recommendations for the funding of our sewer. But this person felt that it was limited and not at all very comprehensive, that indeed maybe there could or should be a water quality committee that, that looks at water quality not just along the sewer plan, but for the whole town, including freshwater ponds. So this was also a, how do I want to say, a reaction to me mentioning that this was going to be officially disbanded, even though they haven't been reading for a while. They thought that that might be a justification for resurrecting it or reconfiguring it. So I'm not so sure if it's too much to ask you, Cindy, if you could look when they last met, or is that something I should ask?
I think it was like in 2018 or something.
Yeah, they haven't met in 12 years.
Yeah.
I just, my thing about this is, we've had 12 years without this committee, something had to take the place of the hole. Anytime you take something out, it's either gotta fill in, or plugged in, or, or something. And I, I mean, and I'm not saying our water quality is worse or better 12 years later, but I, I mean, I just feel like, if it hasn't met in 12 years, and that hole hasn't been massively noticed, and there hasn't been an outcry that we don't have it, I just feel like it must be being managed by other people, and then you'd have to be trying to pull in a lot of groups, APCC, Barnstable Water, we have all the water departments, we have We have all the water departments, we have the freshwater ponds, we have the Cape Cod Commission, we have the Barnstable County. I mean, like, how are you going to get all those people to come to our town to help? You know, like, I just, I feel like, plus we have the departments doing the work.
Yeah, in the minute, in the minutes of March 12 meeting that you guys had, um, Vice President Clark had a conversation with Dan and he's, he said that, or I thought he said, or according to the minutes anyway, this has all been filled in with personnel and you've got every town touching every body of water now through different collaborations and it becomes a discussion also with the town managers meeting about water quality. So that's why it wasn't in existence, Dan said, for 12 years, because so many other entities are now looking at it, including the Cape Cod Commission with their reporting.
Okay, I just thought I'd share that with you, this perspective from one of my fellow committee members.
And Amber Unruh, what, what department she worked for?
GPW.
I think Dan is taking some of these over, because we had an issue with Joshua's pond where a number of swimmers in the morning, uh, noticed that there were a lot of like soap bubbles, bu- bubbles on the lake when they were swimming. And she went over there and tested the water and found it was, it was, we thought maybe somebody's had an outpipe from their washer dryer, turned out not at all, that that's a natural phenomenon. And so she was right on top of it, so I think that was.
Yeah, and I think that's what Dan said to you was, when this committee was originally created, it, we didn't have the personnel and, at the time, to handle all the calls and things that came in regarding our lakes and ponds. But like John says, now they have Amber and she, she basically runs out every time she gets a call.
Okay.
Thank you.
A couple of things I wanted to, I had put on my list, uh, is that, um, one was the, uh, conflict of interest statement. We talked about that, uh, at the last meeting. And what we could put together for somebody who's applying for the board before they're given the board that they would, they would, um, would, would sign off on or that kind of thing. I had a little paper on that, if I can find what I'm looking for.
Oh, you have it right here, to be included and signed by all.
This one?
This one, this one, yeah. This is the, at the top of it is the statement that's already there. State conflict of interest and the answer yes or no, are you going to be such financials would potentially impact your ability? Well, yes or no? And some additions, I, I was thinking of some proposed additions. One is to add a signature line under disclosure of current financial interests. Uh, then also to add obligation to disclose financial interests that may arise during the term of service, consent to do so promptly and consent to withdraw from the committee to assist the town to give effect to the state and town code of ethics and an explanation of that. And, um, and there's an example down below. As you can see, appointed or responsible for continuously monitoring their own circumstances and updating their financial interest status should, should financial interests arise during the term of service. I agree to disclose any such financial interests that arise during my term of service that would potentially impact my ability to fully participate as a committee member on the committees in which I am applying to serve. If such circumstances arise and is not disclosed, I agree to withdraw from the committee and notify the appointments committee. In further, as the town's code of ethics is followed, is the policy of the town that marks that all public officials and employees demonstrate the highest standard of personal integrity, truthfulness, honesty and loyalty in all public activities. Just threw that out. Um, I'm looking for something that, that either the appointments committee can have a rock solid say, instead of going through the whole thing. We, we, there's a lot of times when there's supposedly a conflict interest that is sent to Boston, it takes them eight months to decide whether that is or not. And I'd sort of like to get back to a more stricter view and, and one way is to have, uh, a statement that they, they agree to, to set down if that is discovered, that they have not made that clear. And I also probably want to, want to go through Attorney, um, Colliano and, and maybe have her look at this and, and see what can be done. Just want to, I just think more teeth needs to be into it. We've had so many problems in the last 10 years with people who are serving with, um, and they have different interests, uh, that when disclosed, it's, uh, it's difficult for them to remove if they are doing it, um, with not the right frame of mind or not right, the right, um, process to go through. See, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to tighten this up, so every time we've had one, we've gone through the, the legal department and then they go to the state and they say, well, it's not a big thing or it's, uh, I think some of these things are big things though. I think it makes us look, uh, like we are riddled with people who have personal interests at times. Maybe it's not always the case, but many people want to serve on these boards for that reason, that they want to affect policy that maybe affects them going down the road. So I'm, I'm just put that out there just for us to discuss. Go ahead.
Um, I think it's a great idea. I'm thinking what we also might want to include here is information on if you have a question about whether you have a conflict, this is who you contact, this is who you would go through, providing them the state information. Um, and obviously no one's going to remember this piece of paper a year or two or three or five or six or 10. So maybe having a place where it's noticed related to the standing committees, it's easily found. So if somebody has a presence of mind, like, oh yeah, back when I got put in that committee in 1996, they told me I needed to know this, um, because I, you know, I had a, I had a constituent who had an issue, a question about a conflict interest, um, and actually did call the state ethics board and got somebody on the phone and got an answer right away. Um, and so again, it's just like, what is the process? We need to make it really easy for people who are doing the right thing and are thinking, wow, maybe I shouldn't be voting on this or listening to this. So I think we should just add that information, but I, I like what you have here.
And, um, also signing something, it says, I understand what I read. And as we come to the next terms, we also provide them another opportunity to sign the same form. I just think we should have something when we apply. When we first put their names in here, here's what we give them. We give them, here's what your responsibility, here's what the scope of the board is doing, here's what you should know and not know. Or, and, and what the requirements are, but also we need to do that.
Do you have a copy for Alison, just so she could, yeah, just so she can look into it?
I think we talked about having.
What can and cannot be.
About every two years you have to redo your training. I think that should be on there too.
Yeah, and, uh.
Yeah, what I like about this, John, I think it's good because everyone needs to be reminded of everything constantly. There's just too much going on. So I like what you have in the first sentence for continuously monitoring.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you do this at the beginning and then you forget it. But every time something comes up, you know, it may be, oh my gosh, on this one, I need to recuse myself. I, I need to get out of here. And maybe it becomes something that the, the heads of the committees, you know, read at the beginning of each meeting, just let's, you know, before we get into this, before we even start, because we're dealing with really serious matters when, you know, people come before these regulatory boards. There's a lot of money at stake.
Yeah.
You know, we have developers with money, we have individuals with a lot of money. You've got to, you know, put money to, you know, even come before the committee. And, uh, so it's very serious. We, we, we can't afford to have any kind of, uh, conflicts in any of these. So I like it, I think we need to do it, we need to find a mechanism to do it. But I think your language is the perfect first start, but like Kristen said about the last item we were talking about with the term limits, you know, we came up with term limits. But as she used the word layered, it's, it's a much more layered process. You know, we said term limits would fix it, but that's not it. The appointments committee, this, that, you know, there, there's, there's a lot of different pieces to this to maintain the professionalism we need. And, uh, you know, I'll just add again, when Alison said most of these come from the state, because go to any municipal, uh, government, they all have these things. So, you know, maybe we should be, uh, going to the state and saying, what kind of training do you guys have? You know, it shouldn't be on us.
It's on the ethics page.
Yeah.
I think we should just include a link to that.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, I'm talking about how to do your job, right?
How the committees.
There's nothing unique about us, except maybe what's in our code or something. I'm wondering what the training is, I don't know.
Different groups have different sources of training.
Yeah, but, you know, it, it's a, it's a robust look at the whole, the whole piece. And I think what we're trying to do again, we're looking at the functionality, which to me translates into the professionalism, which is, is what we're trying to be, is a professional municipality.
I think you should mention recusal in here.
Recusal would probably be.
You didn't use, it's not in here, but you used it.
It's not in here, but I think.
So we should have the word recusal.
That's what I was going to ask Attorney Cogliano, if there could be, um, some kind of guidance for a naive potential committee member that says this is, these are the conditions that, or you might want to suggest that, that, um, would suggest that you not be a, a good candidate for this committee. But there are, um, temporary situations where you could recuse yourself and this is how you recuse yourself, you have to do it.
I think that, and that's how you do that.
Yeah, you have to do it, you know, and before the, um, item gets, uh, discussed.
So we're talking about before somebody's applying?
No, 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 we're talking about a living breathing.
I think Chris is talking about like a little handbook of how-tos.
Well, give, recuse yourself.
Okay.
No, not before, while they're in there, because.
No, but I also think before you.
No, but you gotta give it to them before.
Because they don't remember.
I, I just, I, I think, uh, and, you know, it, it's up to you, but, um, I think having somebody look into what the conflict of interest law says, I mean, uh, this statement and, and, um, and like the suggested changes, that's one thing, but, um, you know, linking the conflict of interest training, those things, we can't force people to do that before they're appointed. Once they're appointed, that's why, that's when they go in and they do the training and everything like that and that makes more sense. In terms of your, I, I understand what you're saying where, once they're in the commi- the committee, the board commission, you know, most people, you know, especially if they're new to this scene, right? They don't know what a recusal even is.
That's right.
So, so I understand that. So I mean, I know that there is a, an ongoing project to, to rewrite the handbook. And so I can always, because I know Attorney Nobert's working on it, a handbook at least. So I can always suggest that to her and say that, that, there's a thought that in order to avoid those problems, these people are informed ahead of time, so they know what to do if they think that something comes up. Because, you know, they have that hotline, they can call the state eth- state ethics commission. Um, you know, we can't, we can't call on their behalf unless we have their permission, but they can call, explain their situation. And once the state ethics says, well, you have to recuse, I mean, I think for the most part, they give, um, good advice and they give directives, but sometimes they're very, you know, they want to put it as plainly as possible because they, they don't want to be liable for whatever action you take, right? Uh, but anyways, no, so, so I understand that point. I think most of the education unfortunately has to come after they're appointed. Um, because people that aren't, don't even have the job yet, they're not probably, well, they may be, but they may not be willing to do all that work for nothing, right?
Uh, yeah, my perspective is if somebody got appointed and then they, then they read the ethics or take those ethics training, and they say, why did I even bother get, applying? I, I, I need to recuse all the time. So that would give them information, it's only information, it's not, uh, mandatory. And they, they can say, oh, I'll try the training, I said, oh, this is not for me.
I don't, I don't think that we have a lot of people that are probably that conflicted. I think it's also just more important that we kind of like continually nudge them, remind them and then make the information accessible if they're having a question, because nowhere on our boards, committees or commission page, we have the vacancies and then a list of all the committees. We should have a thing, the number for the hotline. If you have a question related to your service for the board, committee and commission, please call this number. And please call the town office. I mean, I think we need to just make it, you know, like, we all know what we know and we all know how to use this website that is a Russian nesting doll of information. But if you're new and you're maybe even not technologically advanced, it's a nightmare. We just need to make it more e- more user friendly, kind of like the fact that even going, trying to figure out the boards, committees and commissions is a nightmare and none of us know what the heck we're talking about. And we all have been doing this for a while, some of us for a long time. So, I mean, I think we could just have a link to, you know, the, maybe there's a link to some of our ethics language that we think is appropriate and then if you have a question, please call, so you call. I mean, it's, it's not like rocket science. I think, I think that, you know, Counselor Clark or Vice President Clark, you, what you said was, people will go into this and then look more into conflict of interest law and then be like, oh, never mind, you know, that. But I, I, I think hopefully this statement at least will light up a light bulb in their head saying, you know, and if not, then, part of me is like, well.
Well, I was thinking this, not the training, but this statement, whatever we come up with after we, we figure out something, will be given when they apply.
Yeah.
Okay, just so you know this, and then when they come to, uh, to the appointments committee and being appointed, they're already, they sign the document, they've had it, they signed it, say, I'm fine. Otherwise, they just don't come back and say, I, but, but we should do that before, just this, not the training, prior to them coming to, uh, interview with the committee.
And this is the statement that's already on the application form on the top here?
This is what this, the town has already, I think it's on the.
And you're just suggesting these.
I'm just suggesting to change it, I want more teeth in it. Uh, I do, I do believe that, that many of the people who apply for regulatory boards are, already got their hands in a lot of things going on in town. Not saying they got any issues with conflicts, but it should be clear that we're going to be looking for those or we're going to make sure that if there is a conflict that comes up later, that the person should have known about, then we ask them to, to, uh, either recuse or to, to resign from the, from the committee. Because I know from personal experience in two different incidents in the last three or four years, where people have signed this and done this and done all the training, but they, they knew they would get away with it and they're still doing it.
But John, I think that this, this here is new since President Penn.
Maybe it is.
President Penn recommended this top part, there was none of this on the application before she. So, I mean, I think, you know, I'm not making excuses for those people. I guess what I'm saying is we've made a little bit of progress and I agree with you, I think we need more. And I just think we need to add recusal on there and we need to add information. If you think you have a question, this is who you call and how you do it.
And have a signature line, I have read this and I, I agree to this, these stipulations, because I think that's important that they do so. And, and like I said, it's, uh, eight months or nine months for the, for the town to get, and there's a lot of things that can happen in eight months. So, to me, it's, it's a hot issue. I think it's an important issue, I think we've got to get away from being the town where people come and say, I don't do business in there because, you know, it's all a crony thing and there's money involved and everything. And I think this is a way to make it clear that before you step in that ring, that you have said that you are not going to, you're going to play by the rules.
Well, I, you know, I think this gets to one of the committees that maybe we need to look at is the appointments committee. You know, I remember some years ago watching appointments committee and I was flabbergasted. There was one poor woman who applied for, it was the planning committee. Halfway through the interview, one of the, uh, town councillors said, well, you're not qualified for this. How would you like to apply for something else? I mean, how embarrassing. How dare you, you know, you say somebody can apply and then change the rules. I think what we need to do is work on our own appointments committee and maybe have, when someone comes in, not just one, two, three, go, you know, um, have a little conversation about this, you know, maybe read this, you know, set it up, you know? This is what you're getting into. I don't know, I've never been on the appointments committee, I just know having watched a few, some of them were pretty, uh, pretty dicey. I, it just was like, what the heck is this?
Some of them were.
Were terrible.
Already planned ahead of time that they knew.
I know, it really was very nasty to folks that were applying. I mean, it was, it was really, really bad. So, um, are we looking at the appointments committee? I mean, that might be something, again, the functionality of that, you know, a lot of what we're talking about here is the functionality of that appointments committee and maybe the responsibility of the appointments committee to be clear and, uh, you know, totally transparent in, in that.
Just so you guys are aware, the, um, Office of the Inspector General for the state of Massachusetts has, um, training man, training documents on their webpage for how to become an effective member of a public board or commission, whether you're regulatory or advisory. Um, and it's given by Jeffrey Shapiro, the inspector general, and it was updated October of 2024. And it's, it's a, you know, something that you might want to put a link to.
Great idea, absolutely.
When somebody says, um.
Thanks, Cindy.
It says to learn about the public organization, educate yourself about the role of your board and your vote, and your role as a board member, uphold fiduciary principles, learn how to vote and why your exercise when making a decision and voting matters. Uh, actively oversee the executive who leads the organization and it just, you know, so there's, there are training manuals on mass.gov, um, that we can certainly link to.
Yeah, that's great. I, I still say the burden is with the state. These are not, we haven't created these, these are state.
Yeah.
Kind of mandated and that, that sounds really good. And that, that sounds really good. I mean.
And just so you guys also know, on the appointments committee, I think Kristin knows this as the chair, but if there's ever an egregious member that has done something wrong, there is a process to have them removed. If, if you've got evidentiary.
I do not know, but I will learn.
But at least, at least being removed in the two cases that I, in fact, one was given a higher position.
But that's what I mean. I, I didn't hear about them, so they were never brought to the appointments committee. So if I didn't know about them, then obviously me putting the agenda together with the chair, we wouldn't know that these were egregious. So if they were, there is a procedure to remove people from a board that continually do something like that.
Well, I think one thing that's important to keep in mind, because our, because I think our chart, both our charter and our code explain how somebody can be removed and for what reason. And if the language, I, I, I'll take your word for it Cindy, but I, and I can't remember the word that's used. But if it's egregious, then we have to think about what we're basing the definition of egregious on is based on the state, state ethics law. And so if we're gonna put caveats on things where we're putting, we're giving the definition of egregious and we're making it a little bit lower of a standard than the state is, we have to change the code and the charter. So that's something, that's a bigger conversation. So as I'm taking like a first look at this, and then this isn't so much removal, because this is something that they're agreeing to and I don't, I don't know if this is possible. But what, you know, we're, we're asking them to willingly resign if they, if a circumstance arises and it's not disclosed. We have to be careful because we have nothing in the code. And we're going off again, we're going off state ethics. So it's just a little bit more complicated. So there may, in order to really give it to you, that it may have to go a step further, is what I'm trying to say.
We can, we have to abide by the state ethics laws, but can we be more strict?
Yes.
And that's what I'd like to see is be more strict. Because I think we have a perception problem in the public on some of these, some of the individuals in the last number of years on these committees. And they raise eyebrows and, and, and if this was handed out when the person applied, they would probably, probably have little excuse later to say, oh, geez, I, I, you know, I, I have this business doing this, they can, I'm here on the committee that is making rules for that business. Well, you should have, A, you should have known it and B, if you don't know it, then you know it now. And I think that's something that we could, I really wanna put more teeth in our, because we have that problem.
Yeah, and, and another thing is you just always have to be careful of being too subjective in making those decisions. And that also is another argument for changing the code and putting it and writing somewhere. Or, or even when the appointments committee, I don't really know about the guidelines or obvi- I'm sure you obviously have things in writing that you're, you're reviewing these applications. But if there's something across the board that you're reviewing each application or reappointment, you know, that takes the subjectivity out of it, which, which protects you all a little bit more.
I was told by the town manager that there really is no procedure to take somebody off of a committee.
It's a inter, a procedure? I don't know about procedure. I, I'm thinking more of like reasoning, like if they move out of the town, like there's certain.
That's a reason, but I'm saying there was a conflict of interest, I talked to this person, the town manager about it. He said, I don't know if there's, I don't know what the procedure is to remove anybody from a committee.
Let me get the, I can get it for you and I'll distribute it to you guys, just so you have the knowledge.
So what I'm trying to do is, 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 is make us a little bit more aware and stringent on what we consider conflict of interest. For example, I'm running a business, no, I'm, I'm on a board that is making policy on a type of business. But if I'm in that business, I should not be on that board. Or I should, or I should recuse myself from that position. That's a, that's a true example that happened in the last, last five years. And, and it should have been disqualifying at that point when that was discovered, but it wasn't. So you should not be able, it's like putting somebody who owns a restaurant on the licensing board when the licensing board is licensing their restaurant, which has also happened. So these kinds of things. Should be automatic removal or.
So what do we? I, I don't disagree with you, but what's kinda weird is, you know, we have developers who are part of our ZBA.
Yeah.
Right.
But, I mean, again, I, I think that they do a really great job and.
Well, they're not doing it on their own, they should be recusing from their own business if something comes up.
I know, but your, your example of a restaurant owner shouldn't be on the licensing board.
Yeah.
That's like saying, you know, Mr. Dewey shouldn't be on the ZBA or Mr. Robashad shouldn't be on the planning or Counselor Neary shouldn't be on the Thai TIF. I, I think like the responsibility, I, I don't, I don't totally disagree with you, but on some level, those people do have knowledge that makes them useful to the committees. And they have to also, hopefully they are doing as, as you're wanting. Cause I agree with you, all of this, I agree with all of this and I support that. Like I hope this doesn't just go nowhere. But I mean, I think part of why we put some people on some boards, cause they do have knowledge that's useful to the board. So we can't say, you own a restaurant, so you can never be on licensing because they might actually know something about the fact that a license doesn't look clean and good when they go, you know. So I think we have to, we have to be better about having the process where if an issue comes up, we at the appointments level or the town council, because the town council ultimately appoints to these boards.
Yeah.
So maybe there's, maybe we need a process where we say, you know what? So and so didn't recuse themselves or they didn't state that they had a conflict of interest and they didn't file. And that comes before the council as a body and we remove them from the board. So I think, I don't know how that would work, but I think we have to be really careful, cause some of our board members own businesses in the areas they're in and they're very good at it.
Well, on this issue about the licensing of somebody who had a business that was that was subject to that licensing authority, the town lawyer convinced that person to step down. That from that position that they were appointed for on the licensing board, now the, now the person has a different position on the planning board, but it doesn't make a difference. That was actually Karen, Attorney Nobert that did that. Saw that this would be a conflict of interest, so that's actually a true, it's already been adjudicated here. I understand what you're saying. I, I understand you can't have people with no knowledge of anything going on in the planning board, no knowledge of anything on the health department. You also have to have, I'm just saying, we need to tighten it up.
Yeah, totally agree with you.
That's what I'm saying. And because I think there's been, to me, there's been three or four occasions in the recent years that have shown that we don't have strict rules about conflicts. And we need those. And those people knew that and they continue on their way. So.
I'm also happy as I look into this proposed changes to the statement, happy to see what other municipalities do with before, prior to appointment. If there's, because I, I mean, a huge part of my job is seeing, okay, has somebody already done this?
Yeah.
And found it to be legal. That's not to say that if they've done it, it's legal, but it'd be helpful, so I could always ask the municipal, the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association. If anybody knows any language or it's just a simple Google search through people's codes or municipalities codes, but. So I think that that's a good bullet point, that that's very important to you as a, as a committee. And then I'm also hearing a lot about the website. So I think those two things are definitely going on your recommendations list.
That, that's my question, John, is if Allison could tell us what she has understood we want her to do. Cause I don't wanna, you know, waste time. What, can you tell us what you think you're good, you're doing, what you're gonna bring back?
Well, I think I'm hopefully going to, definitely by the, hopefully by the next, I wanna say definitely, but you never know what could happen. By the next meeting, this list, I have, I have drafted a memo, but it's in draft form because, again, I'm just not positive. So basically what you're getting is a piece of that memo. Hopefully I can get you that memo with the final separation, once I'm able to run that conversation by Ann Quirk, Attorney Nobert. Like these are people that know who, you know, and I know that this has been a project that Mary Lou and Ann tried doing a few, a couple of years back. So hopefully finalizing that memo for you all. I thi- and then looking into the statement, whether this is gonna be okay. You know, I, I think that.
It's just a starting.
Yeah, and I don't.
That's just a starting point to get the conversation ready.
Right, and I don't see huge issues with any piece of it except like, and I, this may be just me and it may not be a problem at all. But something in my head rings a bell where we're asking somebody to, like ahead of their appointment, be, agree to withdraw. Like I, I just need to look into that to see if that's.
No, I think that, I think that statement was if they are.
Already on the committee. Right, no, no, yes, I, that's what I mean. So, but we're asking them to agree. Oh, oh, so you're saying.
Yeah, they're signing a statement that says if this comes up in the future or I haven't, I haven't disclosed it or there comes up another conflict, that that person will agree to step down.
Maybe we need to put on this paragraph, once appointed to a board committee or commission, if a circumstance arises and is not disclosed, I agree to withdraw.
Yeah, there's all kinds of lines we can, it's just starting the conversation.
Sure, so looking into that and also looking for some other language or similar language in other municipalities to see if we're, you know, I'm, I can't imagine we're the only municipality with these issues, right? So those are, those are the two things that I've got on my list to do. And separately, I think we've agreed that the town website not only has to separate out the commissions, committees and boards, but we wanna link the state ethics and then we wanna link the guide that Cindy found on the Inspector General's website. Because then on the application, you can say, please find more information on the website prior to applying. And maybe that's something we suggest, like prior to applying, maybe you wanna review these things and see what it entails. And then, and then I, I'll, I'll talk to Attorney Nobert about perhaps doing something similar to this inspector general guide, but within our own handbook. I don't know where she's at with that project. I just know that it's something that she's been working on for quite a bit of time, so.
And I found those two, it's in chapter, chapter C in the charter. It's the general provisions, section nine point five. You can remove a member if they have not attended or if they've missed three consecutive meetings in a row. So that's just attendance, but what really digs deeper into it is the town council rules. And it was the section where you guys were questioning the rule fourteen, which is inquiries and investigations. And according to section two point, two dash ten of the charter, gives the town council the authority to conduct inquiries or investigations, may require any town officer or member of any board committee or commission to appear before it and give such information as it may require in relation to the office held by such person, its function and performance. The town council shall give forty-eight hours written notice of the general scope of inquiry which is to be made. To any person, it shall require to appear before under this section. The town council may do the investigation into the affairs of the town and into the conduct of any town agency and for the purpose may subpoena witness, administer oath or require the production of evidence. So that's in the town council rules.
Does it say how that would be? How, would, would, would a number of counselors have to do this together?
Yeah, an inquiry may be called for by a majority vote of those present at a regular council meeting. An inquiry shall be made through the town manager if it concerns areas under, under his authority. And specific questions asked shall be answered in a report by the town manager to the council within sixty days. And then it just goes on to say, if you need, I'll give you this, John. If it needs independent expertise, the manager can do that, the council has, yeah, it's right, it's there.
That was the section that we spent forever talking.
That was a section that was like, the thought that we would ever do this is insanity. Absolute insanity, subpoenaing people and all this kind of stuff, it's crazy. But that's. So that's kinda bad that that's the mechanism.
But I mean, that's, that's the avenue. If you find somebody that's on a regulatory board that's doing something egregious, then you have an, you have an avenue to bring them before the council to have those questions answered. You know, through the town manager. And if it's a sensitive area, then you just meet with the town manager and he gives you a, gives the town council a report in sixty days after they meet.
Maybe there's somewhere between.
It happened, it's happened once since I was here.
Isn't that interesting? Did we ask you that when we were, cause we had this conversation when we were working on the town council rules.
Yeah, it was the, Larry might have remembered it, it was the Cape Cod, Concom.
Which one?
It was the gentleman that he lived in Astoria. I'd have to pull the paperwork from all there, but he was brought before the council because of something that egregious happened and.
That must have been really.
Was he on the.
It was very uncomfortable.
Was he on the commission?
Yeah. Not only was it uncomfortable for the person, but it was uncomfortable for the entire council.
I can imagine.
Because a lot of things personally were aired and it was also televised, so.
I was gonna say, cause I know that there's.
It's a very un, that's why Counselor Lucky was very uneasy about that section in the town council.
And, and that didn't go into executive session?
Recuse that option.
No, there's no holes barred. It's, it's in an open session.
But, but we, they could have done it in executive session?
I don't know that.
I, I believe so. I believe what we had reviewed is that the individual gets, can choose.
Yeah, I think, I remember that.
Do I want this in executive session? So, so that person, I don't know if they, and, and it's, the idea is.
And it's the, to me, the rights.
The idea is, well, if town council is gonna investigate me, I want the public to see it. And that's kind of a, I feel like that's a toss up, cause that could go really well for you or not so well when there's sturdy laundry being aired, so.
Okay, let's get back to, back to committees and that kinda stuff. I'm, I'm thinking this is the committee to do this, maybe not, maybe it's the rules committee or the, or the appointments committee itself.
No, code is, code is in play.
I know, I know what I'm talking about, the. But I think these, personally, I just think it needs to be done. I think it needs to be a little bit tougher. There is a, it's not only me, I know I'm always considered the guy, but there's a lot of people in town think there's, there are shenanigans going on in certain things. Not now, but I'm saying in general in the past, in the recent past that they happen. And I think we need to, I think it would be best for the town to have a clearer view of what a conflict of interest is.
A proactive rather than a reactive strategy.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, okay, good. All right. We have the list.
By the way, that reading of if you miss three meetings in a row, I believe it says you may be asked to leave, not you shall. And it's possible that people could miss two meetings, go to one, miss two meetings, go to one. They could be insincere about their commitment, for what it's worth.
Well, maybe when we do the code, we can discuss that.
I like the word shall versus may. And that's why I want something here that says shall.
The only problem is if somebody is disabled, cause they got a broken leg or something.
No, that's, that's extending service, that's, that's fine, yeah. No, you don't, no. It's only if, if, yeah, it's only if you're, if you're corpus mandis and you go ahead and. The only other things I had, we've got other, other boards to look at. But I had the, something we should probably look at is Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board and the Finance Business Improvement District Board. I don't know if those are included on our, our list, but those are both public committees.
The bid's not.
The bid has nothing to do with us.
Nothing to do with the town.
The bid has nothing to do with the town?
No.
Okay, well, what about?
The affordable.
What about in the, in the law about who can serve on the bid and who can't and that kinda thing?
They, I don't know anything about the bid, other than they have their own board members, they pay into it, there's a fee that people pay into, so you'd have to get. Elizabeth Warfane is the.
Let's pass that one up then.
And you have no, no jurisdiction there?
No jurisdiction.
No.
Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. I understand that's a number of town manager, assistant town manager, I think finance director and a couple of other people on that one. Does it have space for appointees or volunteers or what's, what's going on with that?
So let me bring up the statute, cause that is a, that is one that I have on my town manager appointment list. It's, it's Master of Law's chapter forty-four, section fifty-five, fifty-five C. Let me just see what it says on here.
It's right here if you wanna read it.
Oh, is it this one?
Yeah.
Allison, chapter.
Oh, no, this is the.
It says chapter fifty-five.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I have it written in this.
Oh, oh, oh.
What is the chapter?
It's chapter forty-four, section for, fifty-five C.
Yeah, it's in your, I gave it to you as a description in the packet. Yeah, it's in your, I gave it to you as a description in the packet, here you go. Gives you a better idea of what it what it does and how it functions.
She is in Charlotte.
Yes. Yeah, the statute is listed in the definition section as well. In our actual um rules and regulations, but I don't know why, but I have no service. Naturally.
Does it say somewhere what the makeup?
I think it does in the statute, I was waiting for it to blow.
Oh, okay.
It wouldn't be in here then.
It says hit may, it says here the.
All right, the five members, three in town mansion, none of whom have housing expertise, but they. It's Mark Yell right now, it's Mark Yell, Andy, Mark Mill, Laura Schufelt, and there's a vacant spot. And I think that was Wendy North Cross was there also.
I think she filled there was an economic development piece, do you see that?
Let's see that.
Composition, the town, the town managers determine that there should be a board of trustees composed of five trustees. Town managers shall ser- serve as a trustee, composition of the remaining trustees may be as follows. Town employees, including but not limited to the assistant town manager and the finance director. An individual with expertise in the development of affordable housing. And an individual with expertise in sound and prudent economic development issues. As determined by the town manager in his or her sole discretion. The town manager shall point the remaining four trustees every two years, subject confirmation by the town council. Any trustee may resign by written instrument. Kinda poorly written.
Yeah, it's also the one that Jillian said sign.
I will go back to um, I had something here about the the bid.
Oh, sure.
We have a second, um state law, chapter forty zero, section five. Board of Directors, each bid shall have a board of directors who shall oversee the management entity to ensure the implementation of the improvement plan. The bid board of directors shall be designed by a majority of. Majority vote of the electors or their designees who own real property participating in the bid. Now here's the last sentence, a local municipal government body may establish rules and regulations covering the bid board of directors. This is state law, chapter forty zero, section five. So it's right here, it says that municipality may establish rules and regulations governing the bid. I'm saying we do, but I just wanna leave that out there.
I wasn't aware of that, so. Like, you know.
Well, I mean, in a way it makes sense, because the addition of a business improvement district is actually. I believe is a like a planning designation, like kinda like we did the Hyannis and um. What's the one that we signed, the diff?
Yeah.
Like, that's an actual like working document that sets up that area with certain principles, so I'm sure that probably back when the bid started. We had to say the business improvement district involves this area and we.
I don't think we said it, I I know certain uh store owners that I've talked to intentionally said, do not put my business in the bid. So I think it's it was up to the businesses, but again, that's just one one.
Yeah, and then they lost that, they lost that. They were all um according to the bid, we were said if you're in the in the year, you have to be a member.
No, we don't have a committee for the for the bid, it's run by Elizabeth Werfbein Werfbein. Through the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District.
Wouldn't have access to their documents.
Yeah, it's definitely not on my list, yeah.
I don't know, do they have? What do you want the Affordable Housing Trust, John, is there some issue um?
No, there's no issue, it's just a question of whether um. You know, say, I got some notes here, whether given the importance of maximizing use of public funds. The board allocates whether more housing expertise in the board would add value, talking about adding somebody like. Well, some of the housing experts here that that we don't have any on here, Laura Schufelt's one of the ones I thought, she is on here, so um.
How how did you think we ought to involve the town council with the bid? Cause right now it's not the case.
No, it's not the case, but I just wanted to bring up that there's something um.
I think we've got plenty to do, I don't think.
Oh, yeah, oh, we do.
I don't think we um. I mean, other than passing the diff, which is more allowing um. How do I wanna say?
Yeah, they have a whole website.
Yeah, I saw.
Published 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 documents, why Main Street development process, about the bid, maps and parking, more about us, board of directors, programs. News and press accomplishments, so that they do, they've got a whole website and they list their, all their board of directors are on there.
The diff um involves the way that the um my my recollection is the way that the taxes are allocated.
Yeah.
And that's where the council had something to do, but the way they. Spend money that they collect from their members.
Also, there's grids, there are grants too, when they get, when they apply as a as a group as the bid. They disperse the grants according to.
Well, they do compete for grants along with other entities.
They can do a lot of stuff, though.
They can do as long as as I think there was somebody.
Street cleaning, snow removal, litter and graffiti removal, washing sidewalks, tourist guides. They can do um.
They use Bay Bridge a lot too.
Yeah, street escape improvements, management of parking garage, maintenance, parking shelters, historic preservation.
I just remember a few years ago, there was a property owner did not wanna be part of the bid and. And that person was forced to be part of it, ended up selling the business and moving, uh so. I just wanted to bring a couple of committees that that we haven't talked about, but getting back, are we? I'm asking you, maybe asking where should where should we head now with these with the committees um talking about the.
If you'd like to, I mean, I can.
I don't think all of these are required, um. I don't know what, if anything, we wanna do with any of them.
Perhaps it might be helpful to have, sorry to dump this on you Cindy, but um to you to request of the um. Of the committee chairs. The last year in attendance, are there, is there anyone who's not making the commitment of showing up?
I I could, yeah, we just did that for the appointments committee too.
I'm just curious what that's gonna do for this committee, that might be a point, good for the appointments committee to know?
Oh, true.
But I'm just thinking like.
Oh, that's true, yep, you're right.
I think based on previous conversations, you didn't wanna invite chairs from every single one. But if you all had an opportunity to just take a look at them and, yeah, I think one of them was golf committee that you were talking about last time. Where you were like, well, I don't know what goes on with the golf committee and perhaps you wanted to find out what they've got going on, do they need anything? Something like, I think that was the conversation that you.
I mean, one that I'm the liaison to, that I think I would really like everyone to talk to is Human Services Committee. That committee is a bit at C and I think they could add some value, but it's very difficult. To see how they can add value, um right now and Cindy's aware of this, they they don't have any staff support. They haven't been on camera for months, which is a big foul.
Met though, has that gone anywhere?
We met and we got no resolution other than this committee on committees was gonna maybe look at it. And they asked, Cindy, we asked for staff support through Jim Cupford. And I don't know if you saw the email from Andy Clyburn said Cindy would do that. Because if you look on, that is what Andy Clyburn said. And if you look on the website.
Wasn't told.
You know, even though minutes have been done, it's like this committee doesn't exist, there's nothing there. And it really needs to, I would focus there, because that committee is at C and it needs to either be rescued or sunk and.
I I wouldn't mind taking it back over, cause I I will tell you that when I did do it. The last five years, it wasn't an issue, but then when the subcommittees came on board, I was overwhelmed, um. So I had asked um Cheryl to see if anybody in the committee and Missy stepped up, she started doing.
Minutes, so it would just be you posting though, Missy is doing a good job with the minutes, yes.
They are doing tremendous work that needs to be televised, that needs to be.
Can we, can we um, can we, I don't know how this moves forward, but can we make a motion? That um the chair of this committee reach out to leadership? So that leadership um can find a solution within the next thirty days?
No, leadership will not do that, that's that, we already had a meeting on that, Chris was there, and that's been the response was.
I'll do it.
Let the committee committees and have Cindy.
Okay, but we are now saying we think it's important that they find camera space and get it done, I don't, what is this?
Supposed to be doing.
But what is the stopping, I don't get it, we've met with leadership.
Things here, you're talking about just logistics, and that's where they've asked Cindy to step in. I'm talking about the functionality, I said flat out that this committee adds zero value to the town council.
Okay, well, first of all, let's get it in the light of day.
That's what I'm saying.
That's a logistic, that's easily solved, why are we waiting to do the hard thing, let's do the simple thing first and let's get it in the light of day.
You don't, you can, if you go back to leadership, we're in Udo loop here. Uh leadership has already looked at it and said Cindy can step forward. And do the minutes and get it on the agenda and do that.
Okay.
Have you, you haven't heard anything?
I have not been spoken to about it from leadership or anybody.
We need actual light of day information.
I can forward you.
I know that Chris is part of that.
From Andy Clyburn.
Okay.
Why can't, I'm, I guess I'm asking leadership to let this committee know what the plan is.
What, understood, now what?
Sorry, I'm like so frustrated, I'm so sick of caring.
What might be too is to find out which committees do not have staff support. Because that has been a big disabling factor, especially um pointing to the human services. But for other committees, I I I recall being on an early open space committee. And I was taking minutes, but if you don't know how to reserve a room, post an agenda. How to send it to the town clerk, that's, just because you're appointed to the committee doesn't need, doesn't mean you know how to interface with the towns.
But you know, perhaps.
After that, yeah. Started with human services, we could better understand. You know, other ones that might be in a similar, but this one, as I'm saying, is in dire straits.
This goes all the way back to training, just to be honest.
This is unique training module, because if you ask me to be part of a chair of a committee, I mean, I thankfully have Cindy who's helping me as chair of the appointments committee. I wouldn't know how to do it.
Years ago, and I wanna go probably two thousand twelve. Anne Quirk, the town clerk, and I believe it was um Attorney Wile. They did a whole training in the um for two weeks in the hearing room. And it was mandatory for all boards, committee and commission members in their chairs. Um Bill Cole was there. I was there explaining the appointments committee, Ruth was there um describing Mass General Law to all the committees and what needed to be done. And the town clerk was there to tell them, okay, you've set your agenda, now what do you do, it's a piece of paper on your desk. Somehow it's gonna get to me, um so she went through that whole process of where you send your minutes. Where you put your, where you send your agenda, um. But all that stopped in twenty twelve, so now you've got all brand new people on these boards, committees and commissions that have never been through that training. And it's a shame.
Yeah.
You know, because I I try to tell people, but.
Yeah, so does this committee think it would be worthwhile to have um. Um town clerk Quirk come and explain to us how she thinks she might be able to close the gap on that process? And see if that's something she could do, or maybe it's a video training, so people. Cause we appoint people at all different times, maybe it's something we video so that.
It could be a a training video now that we have that capability.
So maybe, you know, maybe we.
Instead of telling people you need to come to a room on a Saturday, put a training video up that everyone needs to watch.
They have access to the information, maybe it's a written manual that we say this is where you would go to post the things. You know, I mean, maybe we really need to be a little more robust in our training, I mean, I think Mr. Moran would be.
It's huge, and you can tie in your conflict of interest, you know, if you own a business and you're sitting on one of our regulatory boards, this is your potential conflict. You know, before they get there.
Open to doing this, I don't see her connection to the town council advisory committees.
Cause she's in, she's responsible for all the agendas and minutes, I mean.
She swears in every member that's been appointed from the appointments committee and hands them the Massachusetts General Law packet.
Say, oh, yeah, I'd love to take on this training.
No, she just did it before, I don't know if she'll do it now.
There's no way, there's no way.
Well, we don't know, cause we haven't asked her, why don't we ask her?
She may be willing to just to put fifteen minutes aside to do a video like Sarah does with all the interviews now of every town department head. She does vid- little tiny videos, there might be a time when maybe Anne could come in to the town manager report when they're recording it in here. Or we can, you know, I can I can certainly reach out to her and ask her if she's even at the time.
Point is that to train the ones that don't have staff support?
To train everybody on the boards, committees and commissions on how, on what they should be doing, how to act, what they can and cannot. I mean, there's a lot of violations out there with the open meeting law that they don't even know they're doing.
But Anne's the one who's responsible for that?
No, it was joint with Bill Cole, Human Resource Director, Anne did just her five minute spiel on. Once you're appointed and you come to my office and I swear you in, this is the packet I hand you. With inside that packet is X, Y and Z information.
Yeah.
Um and then, yeah, I don't know what what else she would give them, but she swears everybody in and has that face to face interaction. Because they have to bring their appointment committee letter with them that I give them.
Okay.
Um and then she hands them a packet upon being sworn in.
Okay, so now we're we're talking about training, um I was talking about looking at individual committees. Like, we have a lot of advisory, do they even need to exist?
What does a committee need in order to be effective? Okay, if we have people that don't know how to set up an agenda, do the minutes, who do they, I like, you gotta go to the beginning, right? Like, what are the things that a committee needs to know, I mean, one of the things Chris has said to us many times is that. She's a girl, is that a lot of people don't have the knowledge to become a chair, so.
Yes.
I agree.
So maybe we need to think about, yeah, so we need to think about like.
Okay.
Well, what would I do if I needed to post an agenda, I don't know, or what would I need to do, who would I give the minutes to, I've typed them out.
Disagree, I think this training piece is huge, I just would defer to John, how we're gonna approach this, because I still think. We need to look at each one of these committees for their functionality, and I still say. The Human Services Committee adds zero value to the town. I know that's kind of.
I'd like to make one other suggestion.
Have you ever gotten anything, you don't even know the committee exists, so.
I've heard that it exists, I've never seen it.
Well, I watched the meetings back in the day when they were videoed and it was was pretty bad, but my point is is. Or my my recommendation is is also maybe we wanna send them.
Wanna just.
To the chairs and ask them, is there something?
I think that's a good idea.
You know, is there something also that?
I'm trying to think of the best way to approach this.
You know, your committee, how's it doing, is there something that's missing, how could the, how could the town council help you fulfill your mission? And somebody might say, we have no staff support, I don't know how, we don't have somebody who to post our agendas. And we don't have somebody to post our minutes, that would be like a logical easy step that we could fix, and then we have a longer term problem about. Is the committee even effective, I think that's one of our charges.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so where would you guys like to go here, would you like to invite the chair of that committee here?
No.
No.
I think we should just send a letter, I think the chairs are probably not gonna wanna come to it, and we we probably don't wanna sit through forty three boards.
Oh, come on, it's doing, it'll be fun.
But um.
Yeah, what would you think?
But I think we should work through the liaisons, that's what they're for.
Okay.
To communicate with and work with them first, I don't think we have forty three committees liaisons, I think some of them don't have liaisons. Like, I don't think there's a liaison to affordable housing.
No.
So um.
But that's not a standing town council committee anyway.
Understood, yeah.
I don't think there's a liaison to the disability commission.
There's supposed to be.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, is that somebody?
Councilor Levecq is supposed to be.
Okay, let's 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 think about the agenda for next next time.
No, let's, yeah, I really wanna be efficient.
No, let's, yeah, I really wanna be efficient with this.
Actually, can I suggest, um, that if Attorney Nobur is working on a handbook? And we're updating that, that that get twinned with a little video, instructional video on handbook for committees, boards, committee, and commissions, and a video that goes with it at the same time. Advance that as a staff and, you know, committee's recommendation on, on training.
I have a note that, that like, I have one, two, three, four stars next to it. That in all capitals says training, so I'm going to talk to Attorney Nobur, not only about the handbook, but about what we can do. That may be the equivalent of what the inspector general has, or I'll, I'll bring to her attention, if she didn't know already, the training that, um, Attorney Will and, and and Bill had done. And if you wanna revive that, it's a conversation, so I will, um, discuss that with her and see what she thinks.
I think now that we have the video capabilities, I don't think we necessarily need to book the room and make mandatory meeting, I think it's something that people can fit into their work lives.
We should have to find somebody who wants to be in front of the camera to do it. Or it could be a Zoom, I don't know.
None, none of, none of this training answers the question about the effectiveness of a committee. Like, we got rid of the water waste one because we found out it's actually water quality.
You know, water waste still on here.
Water waste still on there. But the water quality one is being taken up.
So, do we want to send a letter to all of the town council members, asking them to give us a sense of how effective their committee is and what gaps they see?
What if they would go into a meeting?
What are their strengths and weaknesses? Um, well, this is like the Doge, if you don't answer the email, you get fired, I'm just kidding, but I guess my point is, is, um. Do, have you watched or attended meetings? Yes or no, that would be a good start. But I guess my point is, is Counselor Clark's suggestion, Vice President Clark's suggestion was, we ask the liaisons, what's going on, are they effective?
All right.
What is effective, what do they see, what do they think?
Write down the questions right now.
Yeah, we don't have to ask them if they've attended the meeting, cuz it's not a, um, requirement, right, as liaison.
Just kidding. Well, hopefully they've watched.
Yeah.
Have you attended or watched the meetings for your, okay, let's come up with some serious questions, so there's a yes or no.
No, I'm just saying. But, I mean, again, I really wanna get to the effectiveness of the committees, I mean, how are we gonna ascertain the effectiveness?
You can say, do, does your committee need any, um, um, do they have any vacancies?
No, we know that.
Are they?
That's the appointments committee, okay. How about this, from a scale zero to a hundred?
I'm not adding value, what value?
How effective do you think your committee is?
Effective, based on what measurement?
It's a very subjective thing, what do you think?
Well, they ought to have some impact on policy, if these are advisory to the town council and the town council does policy. I wanna get something from these committees that would impact the policy of the town with regard to these areas of specialty, council on aging.
Okay, how about this?
Are there policies?
What policy recommendations has your committee made since you've been the town council liaison that positively impacts the town?
I think you're gonna be, see a big old goose egg on most of these.
I'm not so sure, um, I can, I can speak for the shellfish committee, um, somebody once suggested that that could go away. I said, I remember when the shellfish committee was established at one time, at town council meetings. Various people, shell fishermen, primarily, would come to council meetings and complain about staff or regulations or whatever. Now that's off, off the council agenda, and they can mash it up at the committee level. Make recommendations on, uh, to the town manager oftentimes, on regulations or recommendations, and it doesn't clog our agenda.
So they're really advisory to the town?
To the town.
They're not advisory to us, so why aren't they a town manager? I'm just saying, I, I really wanna look at this, what value are we, is, why are they advisory to the town council? I don't know, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't have the answer.
Well, I think that the regulate, I think that, um, their mission says you interact with town manager, town council, they actually. Under Council, Counselor Rap Garsetti, when she was council president, she made a point of.
They had to do the reports, that's what they're whole section, nobody's come.
Inviting. Inviting. Because they haven't been asked. Part of that is, there's a transition, we had all these ad hoc committees, two counselors have cancer, like, we, you know, I think we're kinda off the game.
Yeah. Yeah.
And she would even say she was looking for some daylight in our agendas to make this happen. So I can suggest that to, um, President Tamish, that once, say, the budget season is over, we start inviting some.
But I mean, you gave it to the, the shellfish, if that, if people aren't getting what they need from the staff, if they're going to the staff and they're getting some sort of, not an answer.
It's got value.
And you say the shellfish committee is providing another avenue to have a greater discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Then that does add value, but it's a different kind of, I don't know.
They're pointed by the, by the legislative side, the, the appointments committee, the council, and, but they make recommendations. To the town manager for aquaculture licenses, changes to regulations, they get updated, they, um, uh, talk about, uh, water quality problems, what, what to do.
Fees to the fees?
Fees, yeah, the fees go, um, get aired out, and that way. I don't mean to, um, how do I wanna say?
Minimize.
I don't mean to, uh, dis- disrespect them, but it, it keeps these issues out of a council agenda that's talking about. Broader, uh, bigger, um, policy questions, and they, they can focus on their specialty, cuz it's populated with. Commercial fishermen, recreational shell fishermen, um, and, um, people with science knowledge and stuff like that. So I think the same thing with, uh, I'm a liaison with Counselor Starr, uh, to the Sandy Neck Board. So they talk about the resiliency program that was presented to the council, uh, they talk about, um, regulations, updates on use of Sandy Neck. So it's, it's, it works, uh, to, to take care of that, that segment of, of, um, concerns that affect our town. And Sandy Neck people are weighing in on what happens at Kalmis, it's just on Sandy Neck.
Yeah, well, maybe as I say, maybe my hangup is their advisory to the town council.
Maybe your hangup is that your committee is not effective, and that's a real problem. Uh, so your experience of the committee is, it's ineffective versus maybe, aren't you also liaison to?
Yeah. CFAC.
Okay, and how do you feel that they're working?
They're amazing.
Okay, and other committees?
Yeah. Um, on zoning board of appeals, yeah.
Okay, how do you think they are effectiveness-wise?
And they're fine, too.
Okay, so John, you're part of Board of Health.
Mm-hmm.
How do you feel that they are effectiveness-wise?
I think they're effective, they basically don't need me, or don't want me.
Yeah. And as far as policies affecting policies at the town council level?
You don't send me their, their agendas or anything like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think there's something that's been going on that they should be bringing to the town council for policy changes, if you think their policies and procedures are effective?
But Board of Health is regulatory, so that's a different animal, I'm looking at the advisory.
They might be, give us some information, an ADUs that we might wanna hear from.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, I totally get what you're saying, maybe that's the question, is like, having the town council liaisons. Give us some information to know if there's another committee lurking in here like the, um, human services that really needs help.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up, because they are at sea, they're totally at sea.
Yeah. Such as.
One, because they don't have staff support, and two, because they don't have a, they have nowhere to plug in, we don't have a human services department, so they can't plug. These other ones can plug in.
Interfere with us.
Well, I mean, I.
So it's really difficult.
The council on aging?
Yeah, where do they plug in? I don't know, disabilities, I don't know, where do they plug in? I've watched the water waste committee, I mean, they basically dovetail right into our, uh, derricks.
Uh, a marine environment.
Yeah, they plug right into that, I mean, there's a definite plug, but again, I guess I'm just.
Yeah, no, they're advisory to you.
How are they advisory to us? I don't, we'd have no.
Advising.
Yeah, I don't understand it, or maybe I, I just, the whole construct seems strange, it seemed more like advisory to the town manager. I don't know.
So, just for the record, i- and what we, like, just the last two, we were talking about Shellfish Committee, Council on Aging. The language in the ordinance says the committee is an advisory committee of the town. And same thing with council on aging, so when we're talking about town council, you, you may be appointing. But the, each, each piece of the code, each ordinance is saying what the interrelationship is supposed to look like.
Do any of them say, try to speak to the town council? They all say to the town.
Um.
Because that's kinda what I'm getting at, is that, uh.
I see for shellfish, it says interrela-, interrelationships.
To the town. Yeah, so, so where it says the committee is an advisory, or the committee is a regulatory and advisory, that's what we're talking about, so. Where it says advisory, it's saying of the town, Shellfish Committee, uh, of the town Sandy Neck Board. An advisory and regulatory committee of the town planning board, so it doesn't, I don't know that it's going to say town council, however.
That's why the code has to be looked at, because these were, these committees were put in even when we just had town meetings.
Right.
And then there were no select, and then it went to Select Men Board, and then it went to Town Council, former government, so. When these were written, that's why it refers to the town, because at the town, we didn't exist.
So we're just really appointing them.
Yep.
I mean, that's our purpose.
Right, I think that it, I think that it works, though, to, they're, um, a sounding board to staff.
For the staff, yes.
As, as they come along, and I think that, to his credit, the town manager trusts this relationship to.
So why are we liaisons to them?
Well, it does say under Shellfish Authorities and Responsibilities, it says the Shellfish Committee shall be responsible for reviewing and making recommendations. To the town manager and town council relative to the control, regulation, and or prohibition of the taking of eels and blah blah, so, I mean, and it does.
The Shellfish Committee pays a huge role, as Chris can say this too, in also setting the fees, he, cuz the town manager reaches out to them.
Yeah. Yeah, no, but what I'm saying is, it does men- mention that it's responsible to us, so, and then it says interrelationships. The committee meets annually or more frequently with the town council to apprise the town council of issues pertaining to shell fisheries. So, I mean, I think part of what, um, Vice President Clark is saying is, we've kind of gotten off of our reporting.
Last ti- yeah, the last time it happened.
Reporting mechanisms and our tut, our, our kinda connection to, to all forty-three of these.
Right, that's what I'm saying, our connections are just.
But it's at, at the town council leadership's, um, um, discretion to make room on the agenda to invite somebody.
Yeah, Jessica did it, she had five minutes set aside, and she went alphabetically from A to Z.
It would be a smart thing.
And by the end of her term as town council president, all of the boards, committees, and commissions were heard. They were, uh, they came before the council, did a report, they said what they worked on, the disability commission came before us, they worked with the senior center to get ramps put in on new buildings that were being put up. So they all kinda speak together, but that's what Jessica wanted to know, was if you're speaking.
I mean, that's ADA, I mean, it shouldn't take a disability commission to comply with law, I mean, come on.
You'd be amazed.
Yeah, but that, no, 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 I shouldn't be amazed, that's the Disabilities Act, I mean, come on, you can't.
Well, how many people, Betty, did we hear, Council Lucky, do we hear from on Main Street when the new Great Streets were brought in, they never even considered.
That's, that was.
The disability, and that's ADA compliant, so they didn't consider that either. So the Disability Commission brings these things to the forefront so that it can be discussed at committee levels, cuz it is missed.
Yeah, maybe we need a, um, code violation committee.
We're supposed to do with fewer committees.
I know, I'm just saying.
Listen, Larry, do you have something you wanted to say quick?
Yeah, I've got a lot, but I, I realize that, and I've taken notes, but I brought my own list also, so let me start and see if you can let me get some of it out, okay?
All right.
I'll come over there because it's much more comfortable for me to sit there.
You also have to finish the, what we wanna.
What we wanna do here, exactly.
I'll just make sure it's.
I may need to slip out as well.
Yeah.
This has been remarkably lively. Or that. So, um, the things that I'm updating you on for myself, I've already submitted a liaison thing, and if you've had a chance to look at it, a lot of what's, what's in there is what you've just been talking about. I've built a lot of that right into how liaison should be described. I've got three new ones that I'm gonna either send to Cindy tonight for her to circulate to you, or I'll send them directly if Cindy doesn't mind. Ad hoc standing and assignment, those, appointment committees, those have reworked considerably. So those, that is gonna be, that's my project tonight, now that I have cartridges for my printer. The other things that, uh, you've already talked about, term limits, uh, administrative code, those things, I'm already toying with them. Uh, I'm, one of the things that, that I wanted to mention is, and, and Betty just brought up about how do you establish criteria? I think the effectiveness or the, whatever other descriptive word you wanna use for these committees is a challenge, because they vary from committee to committee. Uh, there may be some basic ones that come up, but, um, if you'd like me to contribute some ideas, I'll be glad to do it, to take it off of your shoulders. But I wanna start and work backwards a little bit. First of all, uh, there's been a tendency over the years to rely upon the chairs of these committees. All I can tell you is that there aren't very many good chairs out there, um, and I've, my own experience verifies that. I think that every time you talk about, and when Jessica had the town council, um, and all the committees were supposed to appear, we never, conservation never appeared at anything. We were never told, because it was all controlled by two people. So, uh, that's, I think that the idea, if you're gonna reach out to people, don't let it just be the chairs. Get one or two other members from that committee to join with them, so you're getting some additional insight that you might not get otherwise, that's your call, not mine. Um, as I've gone through and taken notes, I've tried to mark in red, so that I can point it out to you, but now I've got so many red marks in here, I could be here until breakfast.
We can't.
No, no, of course you can, of course you can.
There's a meeting here at six.
Yeah, but what I'm gonna do is, I think I'm gonna put notes together, and I'm gonna send it out to you, so you can see what I've got, but, um. Well, give me a couple of seconds here, um. There, okay, I've already covered liaison and the chairs, um. There's one thing in my, one of the things I'm gonna send to you, is I've distinguished between the concept of assignment and appointment. Assignments are much more flexible, you don't have to get into how you're gonna remove somebody you've assigned, if they don't work, they're gone. If you, if you've appointed them, you've gotta go through a labyrinth to get rid of them. So that's, I've built that right in there for you to consider, if you like it, then let's, I hope that you take it positively. Where am I, look here, um, can't even read my own writing. The things that you brought up about section fourteen, Rule fourteen, um, was, there's a gap in the town council, many gaps in the town council rules. But one of them is that there's no cross-references. It should be built into many of those provisions, that the, the avenue by which, uh, performance can be done, it should be cross-referenced as many of these other rules. Then it will make sense, otherwise you look for it, you're trying to matching it up, and it talks about subpoenas and all these other things that really are not the method you, you're gonna use to resolve things internally. I think the focus on internal resolutions is vastly superior to courtroom, courtrooms are things that you do not wanna go to. I think that Kristen and I know Anne Quirk in many different ways, because we've talked to them a lot, and you've talked to them since childhood. But I think what we're looking at is that there are things that these committees have to do, they have to put the agenda together, they've gotta get in touch with her. I think Anne would be much more receptive than you think, I think if you try to help her get what you want, she'll do that for you. And the human services is something that I've attended several times, and I've been appalled at how they just have no trend, they got no motion at all. Housing committee is another one, they don't get anywhere, so I think that the ability to identify some of these committees, I've attended probably. I'd say fifteen or sixteen of the committees already, I've sat in on them, I've been silent, but I think that there's things that you need to find ways to identify. You may wind up saying, we can go just so far with this, with this project. The, when it comes to training, many of these committees don't train for two reasons, number one, they don't know how to delegate. Number two, they don't wanna lose control. So in that particular situation, how does that fit into training? It's something you gotta consider. I think that, um, uh, it, there's, there is a leadership thing that I am working on with, of all places, the seniors, the senior center here in Barstool. They love what I'm doing, and who's working on it with me? Steve Zarros, he and I are locked in together with a complete program on how to define leadership, how to work it, because there's a whole bunch of people that come there. That are retired people that love to do that, they love to talk about it. Because there's a whole bunch of people that come there that are retired people that love to do that, they love to talk about it. I'm gonna build that and if you want me to build it into you, that's up to you, I'm I'm free rein here, you know, I'm 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 the rosin cow in the pasture. But so what I'll do tonight though, I'll stay up all night, I'll get these notes out, you'll have them in the morning. But I think that this was an excellent meeting from my point of view. Because first of all, there's a great deal of balance in how you're presenting everything. Where you get to define things and break it down, if you look at the title, purpose, composition, functionality and effectiveness. That's a challenge, those are four big issues and you may want to decide which one are we succeeding at and which ones is gonna be harder to get to. Uh I have a, I'm not measuring that at all. But I do, I do have, one of my things that I'm, my last thing I'm gonna be mentioning right now is is I call it just chapter four, two forty one. Administrative code, it has not been touched for twenty two years. The only thing that was touched was an addition to the article dealing with basically what we call the mullen rule. And if you missed 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 meetings, you had mullen yourself back in. And so what uh that committee is, the biggest problem with it is that it's no consistency from one committee to another. That that there should be a template that everybody fills in the same template, I've got the template, ready to go. It should be, it makes it easier for the appointments committee, it makes it easy for the liaisons to understand what's going on, it's not there. And so I'm I'm gonna act as if I'm the one in charge, I'm not in charge, but I'm gonna do it because if I don't stop, you won't have my information. What you do with it, it's up to you.
May I ask, what is this template of?
It's a template for each, it's it's broken down into composition, which is how many members are on each committee and where they came from. There's also broken down to the duties and responsibilities, it's baking on how many meetings you have, it's it's broken, it's one page. And it's broken down, I worked on it last year and it was used to some extent. But now we're looking at, can this be something that benefits the administrative code? Is this something that can help you look at all these committees and say, there's there's some things can't be made equal. You can't make everything equal, you can't put a Cadillac engine in a Ford or vice versa. But what we're talking about here is trying to come up with something, I find reading that the adminis- that chapter two forty one to be a total frustration. And I started reading it five years ago, long before I ever thought that I'd be working at this level. So now I just see it as some, and I've made arrangements to talk to Mark Els, now I'm gonna corner him. Because he's the one that I believe his department has control over that, I'm just gonna say, either get it done or I'm gonna get it done.
But he doesn't have control over boards, committee, commissions.
Oh, chapter two forty one in administrative code, I'm sorry.
That's what I meant, oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and he's busy, I understand that. So so now when I see him thirsty, if he's there, I'm gonna say, okay, Mark, we're gonna sit down and talk. If you want somebody with me, we'll bring a couple of people, I'd love to have a couple of people, one person off town council to come or somebody else, I'd love to have that. And I like to talk to people, but I don't like to say something and not have a witness, I've learned my lesson. Because if I say something, he says, oh, you didn't say that, you said this, ah, it's right there, so.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, okay.
All right, appreciate it.
One thing, one thing.
Back on the agenda.
Yeah, no, I I think I really like the idea of talking to the liaisons. In theory, there is a liaison to every committee. So if we could have Cindy send out to the liaisons and maybe, John, you could work with Cindy on the language. You know, as to the basic, you know, effectiveness, functionality of the committee and maybe, you know. Can they say a couple of things that they've done, I mean. That would be a place to start because this is a big list.
I agree, I'm wondering if maybe we each wanna give to John what we would want to see in that handout. And then he could pick and choose from what we all say and come up with that, because I don't think it's just incumbent upon John to do this work.
I like that.
You might have a vision of what you're thinking and I might be thinking, and I think if we all say, I'm thinking what I would want to know are these kinds of things. And if there's anything fruitful, you can lift the language and use it, so maybe we could each individually provide that to John.
About that, John, would that be a way to to start?
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Because I like what you said and I didn't think of it that way and so I think that you probably have a lot to add that we would want to include and you might think of it differently and I.
And I've watched committees that I'm not the liaison to and like the other night, I watched the um.
Well, King's Highway.
Kings, yeah, I was super impressed, I mean, that was really nice.
That's right, thank you.
I'm sure I'll be able to make whatever date you come up with, so appreciate it.
So like, there's some that I wouldn't touch, I mean, these things are.
Cindy, what's the, what's the um, what's the length of this committee you were given?
We have to be extended.
Uh today was the last day.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, I thought that it was six months from the date of choosing the chair.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or do we not put that in effect yet?
It's not in effect yet.
I just voted on the.
That was, that's in the new town council rules, which you haven't voted on yet.
Yeah, the new, the town council president.
This wasn't even started until.
No, but that's why we, well, you don't know about that, but we changed it in the town council rules. For this reason, that instead of saying six months from when it got passed, that it's six months from choosing the chair. Because it took us nine hours to choose a chair.
Chris a list and they discussed it the other day and your committee was put on that list for an extension. So I've already given the list to Chris.
Is it?
Yes.
And and present Tamish.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep.
All right, so I'm, this looks like a lot of work, so I'm just wondering if we're gonna talk to every single committee?
I don't think we're gonna.
Or just the ones we think that need help.
Send an email asking certain questions to the liaisons.
Yes.
We need to give them a date to have it back to us because if not, it'll go unanswered and left in somebody's to do pile.
And if liaisons don't come back, they're fired.
Okay, so you guys are gonna bring me some questions.
Yeah, we're gonna email you some questions and then you take what you think is useful and you and Cindy can send that out.
Send it, okay.
To liaisons.
Anything else for the agenda for coming next meeting, wait before we set the next meeting?
Well, I, if it's if it's not a big lift, can we ask Cindy to make a list of the committees? That do not have any staff support.
Okay.
Do you think that's a big job?
No.
That's what I think, I think it's a small job.
And if there are any committees that don't have a town council liaison?
That's another good one, yeah.
There is, I know that.
I know the.
You do? I thought you.
Historical, historical commission.
Well, the historical commission is another one of those, it's a little bit at sea, it's a little adrift.
Okay.
But they have a power, they have, they're a commission.
Okay.
They're empowered to stay um um demolitions.
We're gonna look into the handbook for training for chairs and committees, right?
Yeah, Allison said that Karen was developing that, right? I di- I didn't have anything to do with the first one, I don't even know who did it.
And.
The handbook?
To come sit for five minutes and explain how she might be helpful to us.
That might be part of the agenda.
At the beginning of the meeting, so she doesn't have to stay late.
Yeah.
Can we ask Anne Quirk to stop by and talk to us about? At the beginning of the meeting, very beginning, so she get to see what.
So she can go home.
Yeah.
And what is she coming for, because she's gonna ask?
About the year, about how twelve years ago she gave the training.
Oh, yeah, her her training, okay.
And maybe we could just pick our brain about how we think that um as far as like agendas.
Trying to accomplish that moving forward.
Like what is, what do town council, um what do committee members need to know and how could we facilitate that?
Okay, she can also tell you what's in the packet that she hands the person when they're sworn in.
Okay.
And I would say not only uh like a generic committee member, but also what are the responsibilities of a chair? Because sometimes people are floundering if they're, if they ascend to to be responsible for running the meeting.
Yeah.
Contacting their fellow mates and making sure they attend.
Okay, so by the next meeting, I should have all your emails and questions that we might move forward. Then we have Anne and lists of committees have no staff support or liaison.
I have a question, the handbook that she hands out, that's the one that's like ten pages and it's.
Missing every other page.
But it's on the website, right, I printed it out, it's like.
Yeah, I I I didn't have anything to do with the development of that.
But that's the.
But there's a link, if you look on in every committee page to the left, I believe, it says committee handbook.
Yep, yeah.
If you click on that, there's information, I'm just not sure what's in it because I did not partake in putting any of that together.
I'm just wondering if we each wanna read that book before.
Yeah, it's it's there.
Smart.
Everyone, thank you.
In my opinion, it's it's outdated and it has a lot of information in there that's not really accurate.
Okay.
So can I ask if anyone knows anything about the problem properties appeals committee?
It's in the E code, it's not in here.
I was on the problem properties committee, were you on that?
Didn't it?
That was developed, yeah, John can.
That was in the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve time when they had the, I can't remember the meeting was in Hyatt West. Four hundred something people were there and that's after there were some crimes in in Hyatt and they said, what are we gonna do to get a hold of this? And they brought up five different committees, one was on, you know, problem rental properties I get involved in. One was on uh after school help for children, uh one was on, there's a number of them like that. And it was pretty successful and we came up with uh like five, six ordinances were, new ordinances where one did not pass. And that was it and it was about um like problem properties were, uh some of these properties on, say, here in our area. Off of Beerses where there was a lot of crime and they, we wanted to go to the landlords and actually, many were absentee landlords. And tell them about what the problems were and there were, I remember there was something like twenty five properties that the police identified. And after a year and a half, Paul McDonald came back and said, we just have one now, so um it was good.
Seems like that's all crept back up, I just wonder has this even met, I don't know anything about it.
It hasn't met, it I don't, it.
I think that.
No, it created, it created an ordinance out of that committee, which is now s- on the E code, you can read about, you can read the E code.
So the committee doesn't exist?
No, it sunsetted because out of that document became an ordinance.
Problem, I, I.
But I don't know that the problem is solved.
Well, they can file a problem now that there's an ordinance, if there's a problem with property.
Oh.
You can file based under that ordinance now, whereas before.
It's on our list.
It was just a call to the police.
I will tell you, when I met with assistant on town manager Clyburn with a constituent of mine. The resurrection of that kind of group of people who came together to find solutions. Is is part of what they're starting to do for some of the problem properties because again, it's becoming an issue again. So I think they're taking the work that was done in the foundation of that group and they're gonna be kind of using that. To see if they can start handling some of our properties again, so I think there's gonna be more to come from that.
Do we have a full agenda or agenda that we got enough for, okay, let's move on to approving the minutes on March twelve. Uh any questions or any edits or any?
Thank you for doing this, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
I know that we um accept the minutes as prepared by Cindy from March twelfth.
Second.
Move in a second, um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, uh discussion of next meeting date, when when can we meet next?
When do you wanna meet, John?
Well, what, I probably should go Cindy, what's open now, we've got, I'm looking at the weeks ahead, it seemed to be um say in two weeks.
Which week is school vacation week?
The twenty first through the twenty fifth.
Okay, I will be away for that one.
Let me give you this, just so you can get. Clue as to what's on the town calendar, as well as the school vacation week and what's available.
Thank you.
So we got um.
School vacation and.
What'd you say?
At the sixth, school vacation weekend, Easter weekend.
But Wednesday the sixteenth in the afternoon. How's that work for everybody?
I think that's okay, I think this other.
We've got a meeting at six, there's a meeting here at six thirty for the selectmen, it will be way, hopefully way before that. So maybe three thirty on the sixteenth.
Three thirty, okay.
That work?
The sixteenth.
You want me to check with IT? Cindy?
Um I'm just looking at the calendar now for the sixteenth, I don't think it's a problem.
I got the highest main street waterfront historic here in this room at six thirty P M.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Three thirty on the sixteenth?
Yeah.
And unless we hear otherwise, unless Cindy finds out it's not doable, works for me.
Good, buddy?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, that's fine, three thirty on the sixteen.
Yeah, I know they prefer day rather than evening to IT.
Okay, I think that's what we'll do.
The staff's already here.
Well, that's not, that's not a.
Oh, that's all right, I can get it, I gotta gather the other thing anyway.
That was a weak throw. Okay, so we're good, we have a um motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.